All right, so Loyal is not here tonight. Her parents are in town, so she is not coming. The only change to the agenda is just the time noted at the bottom where the next school board meeting would be Monday, October 28th. The time change would be 5:30 PM instead of 6:00 PM. And operations would be after if needed.
So scratch the one before if I can.
Yep, so scratch that one. So other than that, was there anything else? Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Public comment, reports. We will move on to middle school reports.
And Heidi and them have...
Are you doing it all, Wayne?
We'll do it.
Okay, all right.
So we're working up on the middle school report.
Yeah, because she did on the culture climate last time and she's actually doing the boards tonight.
Oh, okay.
Because of the conferences and...
Yep.
Look at that. Is that a new jacket that came off?
This is an older one.
I like that one.
Yeah.
How did you rate?
Yeah, he walked out. Shall I leave him here?
Yeah.
Okay. These ones have the seed. Okay, most of these are highlights. Some of them I can kind of get into a little bit more. House of Students, that is a student-led group that formed last year. And so they've had a few meetings this year, but they were the ones that led our open forums this year. I was grateful that they helped guide us and meet some of that. Sat in on a couple of meetings with them. Their purpose in starting last year was to be a voice for students and to use their voices as a way to maybe change policy to get to that point, whatever needs to be at this level. So far, it's really just been very minimal and within the building kinds of things. It's a good place. They've really learned. Mr. Markord, he's kind of showing them the protocols for meetings and things like that, which is very interesting to them, just a lot of them have never done that before. We had a couple of students show up at the last meeting that wanted to voice opinions or concerns while they had to learn, maybe the open mic concept came up. So they're coming back to the school. One of the issues was a senior and he's got a couple of college classes, but he wants more than, he wants another study hall. Right now, we offer one study hall. If you have two college classes, he wants another one.
Better not be my child.
No, it wasn't. Let's see. The next one should have been a different number there. But congratulations to DGF Student Council and the advisor, Lord of Manstrom, and anybody else that was involved in Homecoming 2019. It was a good one to remember. I sat in the pep fest that day and I never know about pep fests in the high school, how well they're going to go, but it was, I thought it went very well and very positive. And then the weekend was pretty good, other than a couple of highlights that maybe weren't so good, but as far as the behavior. But these groups here were leading the way that weekend. It went very well for Homecoming. Grade level meetings, just a couple of highlights from my side of things. The first week of school, I met with each grade. Seniors one day, juniors, sophomores, freshmen each day. Just went over highlights of my expectations or our expectations in the school for the year. Seniors, I use it mostly for, that meeting mostly for, this is your last year, your nine months from now, 10 months from now, what's your, what's your plan? Getting ready for graduation and then that next year. So we'll have several of those meetings after Christmas into the spring with seniors. And then last week, I met with each grade just during rebel hour, rebel time, and tried to just inform each grade. And there's two different perspectives. One is juniors, seniors, and one is ninth and 10th graders. And so I told them, there's two different things I want to talk to you about. One is a for-sure thing and one is a possible thing. For-sure thing is the Career Academy. And the possible thing is referendum passing. So highlights on each of those. Junior, seniors are, it's pretty much, I'm talking to people that have an opinion that they're not going to be around what's in it for me. So I've got to kind of tell them, you maybe are going to be living here, you might have kids here, you might have family members living here. Those are your stakes in it. Ninth and 10th graders are ecstatic about possibilities. They're excited. I know Heidi talked to...
Six, seventh, and eighth, yeah. It's been awesome.
Yeah, so they're excited too. Career Academy is a big buzzword out there. They're, they're really excited about that, that chance and opportunity. Let's see here. Okay, yeah, Homecoming week has come and gone. Ball sports programs are winding down. Playoff season is about to begin. Lots of pride, lots of rebel pride with our teams and successes this fall. Friday, okay, so we, we hire a company called InterQuest Detection K-9 Unit. And it's a gal that comes out of Frazee. She brings a drug dog in and it's a passive dog. So when they detect something, the dog detects something, they just, it's kind of cute, actually. They just sit and look up with really sad puppy eyes like they want to treat you kind of thing. But it was, it was a good day. It was the first time we've had them in this year where we did that. And it was good that students got to see this. It was during, it probably took two and a half hours. So two passing times, they saw the dog. Classrooms with the doors open all saw this. They checked all the lockers, locker rooms, bathrooms. Didn't find anything. I saw a few uneasy kids though, which was interesting. The ones that are on the radar. So next time, they're coming back in November and we're going to check the parking lot, pending temperature and wind, they said. And what's the other one? Parking lot and class, a couple of classrooms. So when we do classrooms, we'll have students leave, but I'll tell them when I walk in, I'll say, leave your bags, any bags you have, any backpacks, sweatshirts, coats, any of that stuff, because they can detect the smell on their clothes. So it was a good day, that first day. At least I, I mean, I was anticipating finding something, but didn't.
That's good news.
Yeah.
That's good news.
And those things detect the baking food.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, counselor programming. So if you turn the page, of course, we changed our counselors this year. So Katie Omen is the ninth, or 10th, excuse me, 11th to 12th grade counselor. And then we hired Michael Wisco to do eight, nine, and part of 10. So this is a calendar that Katie created before school started. And those are the highlights of different things that go on each month that she's working on with the kids. So you can see, September or September and October are fairly busy. We had a FAFSA night last week. I can't even remember how many were here, but it was in the tech room, or computer room right over here. Like four or five people from Morant State Concordia came to help from their financial lead office. I want to say there were up to eight to 10 families were here, which was better than last year and all that. We only had five youngsters show up. So that was last week. And then we have a lot, a number of testing days. We have the career fair coming up in January, which was a hit last year. And we're hoping to have that and if not bigger this year. She's met with all the seniors. Juniors will come in the spring and then sophomores too, so with career planning. Michael, he, of course, he's green, he's a rookie. We meet, the two counselors, myself meet every Thursday morning and talk about, I usually set the agenda, but it's, and they bring some things. The biggest thing with Michael is understanding his role in a school. And he's dealing with two different places, two different ages. And my big thing for him was, for him to be visible and kids to get to know him, but him get to know the kids. He's helping me with lunch duty now, so.
It's a good thing. That is a good thing.
Yeah, I know he's about to start some small groups, which is, you know, a previous person had several different groups, but I told him to hold off on that until he kind of gets to know the kids and gets comfortable with different types of groups that he can perform as well. If we go to, let's see, I started, eLearning. Okay, so the site, our high school site team met, wait, I want to say it was two weeks ago? Yeah. And put together an eLearning plan, a concept for, say, the snow days. And it's, I don't have it here, but it was put together as far as for those snow days that we might have. And then that group, our site team's going to share it with the middle school. Then our six, 12 groups will come together and talk about it and eventually make a recommendation to our admin team to hear. So I don't know what the birth of five has done on that yet, but it seems to be a pretty good concept. We looked at it at several other schools. Holly had one, Breckenridge, Barnesville, Detroit Lakes, some from the cities and areas. So they're all fairly similar. But the biggest thing is teachers are to be available by email throughout the day to respond to students' questions. One of the questions we had was, do you have, do you follow your regular lesson plans and put that out there that day or for that week? Or do you have something pre-planned? It was kind of a 50-50 mix in the different districts. This group wanted to just continue on with the lesson plan. Another idea was whether or not to have, or how many days it would take to get that work done for a student. Do you have it? Most of them were two to three days. So you have this storm date and then two more days after that. Some were, a few of them were just two days. So the storm day plus one day. Initially, it was leaning towards just the two days. And now we're, I'm seeing email messages going back and forth that maybe we should go to that third day because of those that don't have access and/or disabilities. So those are probably the three main questions and highlights out there. But hopefully, they have something as a, we do as a group, have something ready before our next date.
And this is something we've talked about administratively, that the onus is back on our staff. We're not going to, this isn't going to be driven by top talent. It has to be something that they totally are creating and that has value so that it's not just, hey, I'm around, they can hold me, I can check on my phone. No. I mean, what is the learning that will be going on to make sure that we're just not saying, oh, we don't have to make up any of this time and we'll just continue? So both the birth to five and the six to 12 have to have what they're going to do, they're going to propose it, and they're going to present. They're going to present to you so that, and it's not going to be asked the same night that they present that you're going to take action on this. Because I think this is one of those cases that we do want to have some parent and some student feedback on this also before you make a decision that you're going to just approve this as being one of those options. So we know it's very productive. I have, I have concerns. I've seen, I've heard it working well in some, but the ones that really works well is so thought out and has had parent involvement. Because again, like Wayne said, if we're talking about things that everybody doesn't have equal access to, that is not, I would never be recommending that.
Do we have any PAC groups that are having a meeting soon?
They have not been involved in this yet because I think this is coming much more from, more than the middle school, high school. And again, we're not going to have, okay, well, the elementary has to make up these days, but now high school, middle school years don't have to show up and it will play havoc with our staff, with the kids, parents, everything else. So they had the opportunity over the summer, nobody wanted to work on it. And so if we don't have it ready by the first time we have a snowstorm, we don't have it ready. If you're comfortable with that. I mean, that's, that's, that's my belief with this, is I don't want to bring anything forward here until it's pretty well vetted.
And I think when you brought it, you guys had brought it up to us last, was it the summer?
Over the summer.
Our summer.
The retreat.
Yeah, it just wasn't very well laid out. So yeah, if we had a concrete so we can see kind of like what the process is when we're visiting with people in the stands or at church or whatever.
Yep.
You know, it's well thought out and efficient.
And I have, I have no idea what, if the birth of five has done anything, whether they have or not.
Okay. Well, we look forward to hearing what you guys have to add.
Sure. Industrial tech, just an FYI, I've had two in the recent weeks, two local people call. They're not licensed, well, actually, they're not in the field. One has never been in the field or licensed. One I talked to today does have a teaching license, no, excuse me, has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree, but not in the field. But has always worked in the construction field or engineering field for the last 20 years.
So he probably qualifies as a senior expert.
Probably qualified. This one wants to apply and so I just said, well, I said the potential scenario is that kind of stuff. Still is interested in applying and just seeing where it goes. The other one is kind of hesitant. The other thing is in the future here coming up after Christmas, I know in early mid-winter, there's a job fair in Wisconsin and I know there's one in early April in the Twin Cities. So I'd like to see what you want to do there. Those would be options where I could go recruit.
So that's for this year, the rest of this year and next year? And then is the possibility of carrying over to the Academy or?
As far as with the job fair, you mean, and all that? The job fair is...
You're going to find somebody down there that's willing to do it.
Yeah, you know, if, if we get a local person that could potentially be for second semester, that'd be nice, just to cover us through the year. But the Wisconsin one, the Wisconsin one in particular, I don't think there's a doubt that we've got to be, you know, I think working with MAPS and just get, you know, let's get our high school principals, let's get a few people and go over there and work together on that. Because it doesn't really matter who holds the contract, you know, whether it's us or MAPS. It's probably easier if MAPS holds the contract because they can do more things with it than we can. You know, they can go more steps than we can. So, you know, that's, November 6th, we start, the very next day after the vote, we start having those discussions at the building leadership levels between the two school districts. And Wayne's been over for some meetings already with Tamara and them, so.
Okay, and then just FYI, looking at next year already, we have Johnston's tomorrow is here visiting with their sophomores about class rings and they're here to talk to our seniors about graduation caps and gowns. So that buzz is already out there. Rebel Pride, if you take a look at the last page, that's something we started this year. So a couple of things on Fridays, I get in the PA and announce four names. Now I've been, the last couple of weeks I've had five. So I get, I have a shared doc that staff can nominate two students a week. So I picked two of the students that are nominated based on some of this criteria. And then, so then I call those two names down and give them, I have right now a gift certificate from Buffalo Wild Wings and a whole slew of t-shirts. One is Rebel Pride, just like it shows on the picture here. T-shirts, or else I have some other ones, rebel shirts in the back room there. And then I have two, two names that are drawn for students that are wearing school colors that day to all wander around the halls and kind of around 8 o'clock and just randomly pick a couple of kids. So I have four names, so two of them get nominated for behavior, they'll get a coupon and a t-shirt, and then the other two get a Rebel Pride t-shirt. Last couple of weeks, I called a couple of staff and looked down if they were wearing some colors that look kind of good. Like Artisan was wearing pearl leather jacket, leather jacket one day. So that's been, and to see the kids when they come down, yours was one of them, yours too one day.
Yep.
Came in and, and they're...
I was wondering where that shirt was coming from. I'm like, where did this shirt come from? Oh, I got something that...
He hadn't mentioned it to me here with Jay and I'm like, I swore that kid.
Yeah, I was like, shirt, I'm watching it too and I was saying, I didn't order this.
Yeah, they love it.
That's good.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Wayne.
Any questions?
Nice, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Board Committee reports.
We had kind of a mashup of fiscal personnel and confidential negotiations tonight. Not so much of the fiscal personnel, kind of went over the initial audit kind of numbers Brian's not ready to share with the full board yet, but can I share the...
Yeah, yeah.
The positive news is we're going to be in the block. We're looking like we're in the block right now, so. That's all we, thrilled about that. Then we took a look at our confidential negotiations. And these are the people that primarily work in the office or district office, maintenance, IT, throw any other, I'm missing Sandy. And kind of went over pay raises. And we had a couple that were looking at a little bit bigger bump, but the reason for that is because these people have past certifications that will help us. One was Ryan Butcher has got his boilers license now.
He came for me.
Did he?
Yeah. He followed me.
I'm happy for him. I really am.
So what that means for our district is that we have three people that can check the boilers, Tammy, James, and Ryan now. So that takes the pressure off just the two people, so that's wonderful. And then James got his HVAC certification and Brian was going to check if that included gas.
We got to find that out.
We got to find that out. So their raises were a little more due to passing the certifications. So anything to add, Sandy?
Um, no, there was, we had received that job description of the class entry verification list as far as what, what we can offer and what the high end is.
So we had a positive on our pay equity report. And just so that, you know, all the board knows, we basically have to do a, we have to do a pay equity comparison every three years. And it was on 2014 data, 2017 data, and now we'll have the 2020 data. So part of the reason that I wanted the committee to be able to see what the job classifications, and in the Minnesota Job Match, we use that as the basis for it. Where the ratings have been at and the fact that we got the positive from the state on what, how we're utilizing it and what our structure is. To put it in comparison back in 2014, we, and there's been a lot of work that's been done at the board level. When you think about how you reclassified non-certified, think about our job descriptions. That project in 2014, that was a huge project over two years. And we've done that now. And so we have pretty good alignment with it, which has been the basis for all the negotiations. So, but we have a couple of things that we'll be continuing to change. As, as an example, head of the, the building, the building, what was?
Building head custodian.
Building head custodian. Mike and them used to be. Now we've gone to where we have the...
Head of...
Head of maintenance, head of custodial. So those are different job classifications and different ratings. So it's some of those things. And industrial, our IT specialists are getting more training. So when you think of some of these bumps, it isn't any different than how teachers may, when they get their masters. You know, it's not part of the increase, but it is an increase, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
In our recommendation, based on what Ryan showed us on the confidential, is we felt it was comfortable, we were comfortable with the raises, the 3% and then the bumps on a couple of the extra certifications.
And I do have copies for all of you when we get to that action item.
Okay.
So Raleigh and Amy can have one.
So then we will move on to the superintendent reports.
So first of all, I would like to thank all of you for your thoughts, blow wishes, and I mean, you, when I got to my office on whatever day it was on that weekend and there was this thank you card and a gift card, I, it was, it was, it was very nice. I wanted you to know that I just, I thought between the board and the, and the whole leadership, what you did on, at the first forum at Hicklinden was just, it's just knocked it out of the park. It just, I, I slept so well on that Tuesday night, which is not easy to do in those locations, but it was just like, it was such a, you just, you did so well with things and you've, you've worked so well together as far as, you know, setting, setting the example and the tone for the district on, on the leadership. And I truly believe that the community is coming together and seeing that united front, that we are here for kids. And so, so thank you for that. Some things, it's been a good 24 hours last night. I, and I told the committee this, but I met with the Dover City Council last night, that went very well. Had some good discussion, answered some of their questions and clarified some things. But it was, it was very positive. And this morning, I presented at the Clay Colley Commissioners. It had a fantastic meeting. They had nothing but positives and I was supposed to bring the message back that they wanted to show their appreciation and for what the leadership has done of the, of the two school districts, Moynette and DGF for the boundary adjustment and now with the leadership with the Career Academy because they're just hearing excitement from people about that. So it takes that visioning that, that everybody collectively has been doing for that. So great meeting with them. They went on record that if we get the state funding, if pull off to get the road completed to 2026, right?
Seventeen.
I'm sorry, 17. If we can get the road completed to that, they will put across the asphalting and putting that on their schedule. So that's a recorded meeting, so.
We can help them do it.
And they were all very, very positive about it. So just another one of those little check-offs that, you know, the alignment coming together. So that was positive. This afternoon, excuse me, this afternoon, I did an interview with DA Y. And so there was going to be a quick thing at 6:00 and then, again, it'll be a short one. I just gave them a lot of the information and, and I really stuck to, to things. You know, coming together is DGF and, and the equity that that provides and the same opportunities, no matter where you are residing within the DGF community. And that we have a plan that supports growth, internal growth, residential growth within the district that should be growth for 25, 20, 25 years minimum. And number one, the most important that came out of from 2016 moving forward is the safety and security for kids. Safety and security is the absolute benchmark with everything we're doing with this. And so we'll see how it comes out. We are, today we met administratively and we have preliminary plans. Of course, we can't do any big advertising or anything because we have the chili feed on the 26th for that Saturday for the football, for hosting, for the semifinals. We don't want to advertise it because we got a game before that, because we got to run.
We're going to end.
For planning purposes. So that game is... So that game is at two o'clock, so we're talking about maybe 12 o'clock having the feed start. And we've got to be a little bit careful about how we do it because as, as Joe had a great reminder, and I, I applaud him for reminding me about this because I'd forgotten about it as a former AD. You cannot create a big community feed thing around a playoff game per se. They don't want to have that type of thing going on. But because we're approaching it that, we know we have the community that will be there. This is a, a community about, about the referendum and stop and have chili and then go to the football game at two o'clock and so on. So get around it a little bit. Legally, okay? So we got that, we're planning. We are, of course, have, are moving the, our Quora event will be on the 28th. So then we'll have the boards displayed then. We have one more mailer that will be going out during that same week. And that will include for those needing, as far as reminding people that if they have the particular, I'm said credit and if their tax increase. So Paul got me information about that, so we'll have that in that mailer also for people. Like Wayne said, he's been meeting with high school students. Heidi has been like a little rabbit the last few days. Every period of the day, she's been going into rabid classrooms, period by period, sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders over two days, or three days, just to meet with each group of kids so that every student in the middle school gets a chance to talk about it in small groups. And she's just been excited. She said it's just so much fun. They're so excited about the possibility of this happening. So, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of excitement from the students about this, so I think it's wonderful. We, I can't remember if I emailed you or not, it's been a little chaotic lately. Did I send you an email about the fact that the state funding did come through? They did meet their, they did reach their benchmark as far as on the forecast for the states of that safe schools funding? I know they said we'd find out in October. Okay, so like I said.
I thought it was on the MSBA, was it?
It may have been, yeah, it may have emailed. I thought I, I think I emailed it just to the admin team so they start looking at it. The bottom line is there's like $32 or $34 per pupil unit based on your residential pupils in fiscal 17 or 18, which is going to equate to about $60,000 of more new money for safe schools purchases. And so we had a discussion today about whether we, we move forward with vaping and, and some of those things. And the feedback from people, now that people have tried it, is that, hey, the kids learned how to get around that so quickly in the first place. It's, it's really one of those, if you got some money to spend and, and maybe that you don't care about, it's not that effective because the kids just with the vaping, they just go like this and blow it in and it can't detect.
Is there, is there stipulations how you can use that money? Can it be different door handles? Can it do intercom, safety?
Great question. It has to meet the requirements of, of, of the safe schools funding. And why that's great is that it, we had a discussion about knowing that we have that student led group that wants to do wellness and what else not about anti-vaping.
Yeah.
What the principals are going to do is go back to their site levels and go to the wellness and say, hey, we got this money. What things could we look at purchasing? Maybe some educational things, the posters, the, all of those things and get feedback from the kids. What do they think would help with it? So we're, the, we have to spend it during fiscal 20, but that just means we have to spend it by June 30th. And so our take on it and our recommendation is let's wait until we find out how the vote goes. Because whether it be that money, whether it be the 160 some thousand that we have in safe schools in reserve, we're going to be using those funds anyway for new cameras, for all that other equipment and all that will go hand in hand with it. And like Jake said, he'll get much better rates when we do the large purchases. And we can do those purchases, yet get the quotes, you know, do an RFP and all that stuff on those and do all that in the spring and then do it with, get some of the early things done in, in the first six, 60,000, spend that money before June 30th and then the rest, we do right with our referendum.
Do you see some of these towns up north that have got the, I'm going to call them portable crosswalk signs? That they actually put right in the street, very school.
Yep.
It's bigger than a cone, but I mean, it's got, you know, crosswalk, illegal to state law, whatever.
There, the, that goes hand in hand. We, we have not heard, I believe back in September, I, I talked about this grant that we thought we would know in October. We still haven't heard from them and that is $40,000. So that all goes hand in hand with it. So, but you're spot on. When, if the vote goes through, goes positive, what's going to be nice is we're going to be able to get the wellness groups together. We're going to be able to get all these, okay, what are ideas so that people see the difference from conceptual to here's what happens once you've already, now, now we've passed this, here's what we're actually going to do. And then that will give everybody the opportunity to have feedback and input into this thing. So, but that goes hand in hand with it. If, as we reconfigure things for this site and the other site, how do we want to make sure that we're setting things up as safe and secure as possible and safe for walking pedestrians and all of that? So that money will all fit in very well with it, within the parameters. Last thing, there is a, there's something that came out from the Bush Foundation yesterday. And so I, and MRAA actually, if, you also received something from MRAA. Did you happen to see those two opportunities? If you get a chance, look at your email and look at that. There is a group of 20, 20 some that they're going to accept and they want to be in cohorts. And between Brandon and Tamara and myself, I think we're going to apply together. It'll carry a lot more weight. And what this is, is looking at, it would be six months of some intense work. And part of it would be looking regionally, and I say regionally Minnesota, at different career centers, academies, all these learning opportunities. And then nationally, they would take the whole group from Minnesota and fund it through the Bush Foundation. So whether it be Brandon or Tamara and I are probably going to apply for that because we have nothing else going on, professional development. So I wanted to give you a heads up on that. I, I, it's something that I just, I feel is, is a need and I, I want, I want to get this done right, so. Any questions for me? I, I feel like it's going to scatter just because of everything that's been going on, but.
I just had, just to remind everybody, Brian sent an email about leadership, so look at your calendars and let them know if you're going to be attending.
Well, the January.
Thank you, I knew if you have, yes.
January 16th and 17th?
And we put a spreadsheet together on it and, and so we'll give you access. Brooke's already made that up, so for instance, you can put down whether you can attend, whether you want the Twins or the King or whatever. But I would really like to know, okay, is everybody tentative applying to go? Because I'm going to get all you registered tomorrow then. Which hotel?
Probably one we stayed at last time was fine.
Yeah.
That was the Hyatt.
I didn't like that one.
I'm fine with whatever.
Sandy has the most experience, probably Raleigh too.
Well, I would go with that one that we used to have the good breakfast.
Oh, God, the embassy one?
I don't want quite that far. I'm not too old or not like.
I, I don't want that walk in Florida. That's down on, that's about nine blocks.
Millennium, millennium.
Well, there's, all of, you've got the Millennium, the Hyatt and the Hilton.
But the Millennium was so dark and dreary in those hallways unless they just painted. I hated that.
Where did we stay last year?
Uh, last year was a Hyatt.
No, that was.
Well, I wasn't down there when I think about, which one did you think?
I think it was Hilton.
Was it Hilton last year?
The one that's halfway between the old embassy suites and the thing.
Yes, that's, that's the Hilton. And that, that is closer, like if you want to go shopping in the Skyway and all that.
Yeah, I liked that one last year.
I'm fine.
It's, it's close, it's, 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 it's only about, it gets you direct access to get to local and all that with, within like one block. So if you, if you like the one you had last year, that's the Hilton. If you're good with that?
Yep.
Hilton where it is?
And Sandy and Raleigh, since this will be your, probably last, uh.
Oh, yeah, it's the last one.
Last one that you two need to decide where you guys want to eat after your night out.
Well, Sandy will have to decide that because I really don't care.
As long as they have a burger and milk, right?
No.
That is going to be the last one.
Yep.
You guys definitely tell me where to reserve.
Yep.
And I will be there this year.
No store.
That's all I have. Thanks for, thanks for reminding me of that.
I've been there twice in my life, last year and the one time before it was when we had blisters and couldn't get home for the next day, so years ago.
That was a first for me.
But also I'm glad someone like Laura's called back and find out what it was.
Yeah, we've got to make sure Laura.
Make sure Laura's there because she knows everybody. I swear.
Yeah, that's true, we got a free hot order or dessert. Well, we, yeah, we're.
I did find, I did find one of the best breakfast places I've ever been to down there, which is.
Keys.
Keys, it's, it's only about, oh, it, the bakery in this place is, the rails are like.
Oh, I'm not sure what you're talking about, Farm, um, yeah, I, uh, we've been there a couple times with the kids, but yeah.
Unbelievable.
What you're talking about, yeah, Farm something, Farm Girl or.
Farm, yeah, it's like Farm, that's the one. Unbelievable.
Unbelievable, correct.
Unbelievable. The last morning, you gotta go there on the way going home because when you see these strawberry with almond type of deals that are about yay big.
Their size is a small place, yeah, like the whole.
Well, that's just what I need.
Anyway, that's it for me.
All right, so we will move on to seven point one. This is the approval of the September 23rd regular meeting. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye and opposed, same sign. Moving on to business under the consent agenda, under claims and accounts.
Uh, this month, 188,000, dollars, $280.16.
Okay. Your student activity bills is in your packet and your October, your October activity bills, student activity bills, resignation for Whitney Lincoln Staff Paraprofessional, which was effective October 10th. Resignation of Lydia Finsel, also a paraprofessional, effective October 16th. And the resignation of Irma Floria, November 29th. Now Irma's been with us for quite a while. Where is she going? Can I ask or?
You can't, I can't remember. I don't remember.
Because I mean, she's been very positive.
Yes, and, and that was.
Person.
So who's going to be down on custodian? I don't think there's one for tonight, but there.
Correct. No, I take that back. No, we're not, because remember we hired, I knew we were going to have that. We hired one more back in late August.
To be on the heavy side.
That Irma was going to be, I think, retiring or being done in mid-year. So right now we are on track.
Okay. So look, okay. So there's a motion by Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point one, this is the confidential contract for Jessica Runz, sign language interpreter. And I think I actually went to school for sign language with Jessica Runz. I have to see if this is the person that I did this with, so. Soon as I saw her name, I was like, hey, I think so. Okay, so Amy has a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any discussion?
So this is brand new. This is meeting particular needs for student IP and what else not. We will run some of these things through MA billing and such and get some reimbursement, but there's no choice on this one.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point two, the non-certified contract for Vanessa Smith, paraprofessional, effective October 7th. Motion by Lindsay, is there a second? Second by David. Is this filling one of the positions that are leaving?
These are some one to ones.
Oh, okay.
That, that we've developed with some new kids.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Nine point three, non-certified contract for Brianna Laduke, also a paraprofessional, effective coming up October 21st.
I believe this is a replacement. We've had so much turnover this fall.
Do you have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Raleigh. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Ronnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point four, this is extended day field trip for the DGF High School and Middle School Student Council on November 3rd through the 4th. And where are they going?
Wayne, do you have on this one? This is for the, the statewide one, so it's an overnight meeting, the board has to approve it. But we've got the, the advisors for both the middle school and the high school going with those students. So we did this last year. We, we send a group, as, as the student council is, is getting more organized and structured, this is a, just, they, they learned a ton and they came back so positive last year. And I told them, you gotta get this thing approved by the board though. So it's one night, just going down and, and they stay right there at the resort, everything and, and come back with lots of ideas for the principals on how they can, we can improve things.
Good. So you said Brianna, okay, looking for a motion. Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Does anybody have any questions?
I just had a request, I'd love for them to come.
Present, yes. That's a great idea.
Does this, they leave like early in the day then, or is it like?
It's, uh, I think it's Friday afternoon. It goes Friday night through Saturday.
They kind of leave after school basically on Friday then, so.
So they're really doing it on their own time, which is awesome.
Right, so yeah, that's a great idea.
But yes, I think it's a great idea to have them present on that.
Actually, November 4th is a Monday because.
Is it, oh, they come, they ended on, because it comes, it's a Sunday thing, Sunday and Monday.
Yeah.
Yes, it's Monday. That's when they have the cheapest rates for them.
Sure. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This is nine point five, the confidential contracts. This is, Lindsay had talked about the increase that the personnel had said with a little bit increase in some of the other ones as far as the added licensing that they have attained. Looking for a motion. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Anybody having questions?
Can you say that he's for a approximately 3%?
Everyone that is not highlighted is a 3%. So, and this is that, this is the group that took the two and a half. Previously, there were one of those two groups that did the two and a half and I think we've talked about that before, so.
And just to highlight the ones that are in kind of that salmon color, those are new hires within the last six months, but they, they don't have a raise right now. So that's why they're highlighted, they're not really a raise since they were just moved, brought new to the district. Two of them are maintenance staff and two are IT specialists.
And of course, the fifth one is Eric. And Eric has done a, I, I think he's really been transitioning very well into that position. I'm very, he's a great fit. He has a very nice, yeah, I think we've, we've heard it consistent from our whole admin cabinet and. from our whole admin cabinet, and they work so well together in the district office. And just so you're aware, his niece passed last night down in the Twin Cities, she was suffering from cystic fibrosis. So they transferred her from Fargo down, she was 20, 20-some years, 21. And so it was his sister's daughter, and they transferred her down there to the U of M so she could, she wanted to, organs donated, what else not. So he's, but he was here today for part of the day, but that's why he isn't here tonight.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And again, our, remember that a meeting starts at 5:30 on the 28th, followed by the choir, Brandon Choir Council. There will only be an operations after the 5:30 meeting, if it is needed, but those of you on operations will be notified. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you guys again, I appreciate it. Gift card.
Yes, you're welcome.
We are looking at the possibility. I'll wait till you adjourn it.
Okay, meeting is 6:52, meeting is adjourned.